Again, welcome. We have several things to do this evening. Let it be noted that all council people are present except for Nigel Lehman. And we are ready to begin. Do I have a motion? You all have copies of the minutes. Do I have a motion to pass approved the minutes?
I approve the minutes properly submitted.
I'll second.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
I make motion to approve all claims properly signed.
Can I get them?
All in favor?
On the stop sign, I talked to Tim Turpin about that. We're gonna wait till school's out. The stop sign on this, uh, yeah.
First, thank you. Okay. That was one of my questions.
School will slow down a little bit and get that in after the traffic's slowed down a little bit.
And that was one of my questions for all business. The other question that I had is, is Tim Turpin in the room?
Tim?
Do we have the parking spot marked? Is it marked? Cause I've been looking.
It's marked. I like to mark it better, but it's marked right now.
Okay. So those things I've been making care of.
I have contact with the business owner, but it is marked on the first spot.
Okay.
We need to sign up all the, if we haven't done that.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted an update there, cause you hadn't said anything. Okay. In new businesses this evening, we have an ordinance from the A.M. Risher Swimming Pool. We talked about the rates and the changes in this at the previous meeting. The ordinance will read as follows. Whereas this ordinance is brought before the common council for the purpose of allowing the city of Linton, Indiana to establish new rates for the A.M. Risher Swimming Pool. Whereas this rates and regulation ordinance will be codified as the Linton City Code 9580, A.M. Risher Swimming Pool Rules and Regulations. A, the city of Linton has the power and the duties to establish prices, hours, and regulations for the A.M. Risher Swimming Pool. B, the pool board has requests that the common council for the city of Linton adopt the following 2011 swimming pool admission charges. Daily charge will be $4 per daily admission. Family pass, 140 for family of four. Student pass, 70 for students up to high school graduation or 19 years of age, whichever occurs first. Punch card, $65 for 20 punches. Full party, $125 for 0 to 50 swimmers. And full party will increase in price by $10 for each additional 50 swimmers. Special rate for children under the age of six will be free?
It's usually free with one paying a dollar.
Yeah. With the adult paying a dollar. That was left blank, so that will be pulled in.
Now, what, what, if the adult pays a dollar to get in?
Then what they said, they had done in the past?
Well, usually it's with one paying a dollar. Like you pay $4 and you can take junior to swim.
Okay.
That's the way it usually is.
Okay. But if the, if it's a non-swimming person even?
No. Cause we had one lady bring him and pay him a dollar and bring him in. So, I don't know. You can, I can figure it out.
Okay. The pool board requests that the common council for the city of Linton adopt the following rules. Pool parties will be from 7:30 to 9:30 P.M. Pool will be open from noon to 7:00 P.M. Water aerobics will be from 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. With the step, step side of the pool marked off for this activity. Pool may be open on Memorial Day. And it will open on Memorial Day pending the weather. If the weather allows, that's the opening day. This chapter will be in full force in effect from the date of the passage and approval of the common council of the city of Linton. I would like to pass the first and second readings of this since it was discussed at the prayer meeting, so as to meet the deadlines for the pool to be opened. Do I have a motion? That we need to do that?
I have motion. I second.
All in, all in favor?
And can we get, we need to get that corrected about that dollar because are we gonna have people sitting behind the bins dropping their kids out?
We can do this.
Okay.
Not be able to watch.
Okay. Well, we will, the pool board, do you want me to address this with the pool board or do you want to set that now? As council?
This isn't a dollar per student or per kid.
The adult pays the dollar.
It said first thing for a kid.
One for him.
So I need one.
Yeah. But then you've got mom sitting behind the parents when they're 40.
No mom. She's not gonna pay her dollar. I mean, we're not a family ordinance with a dollar per, per kid.
Yeah. So, $4 and the kid gets free.
Okay. Well, we'll just put it on as.
One kid or unlimited kids?
No. One child for paying the dollar.
Okay.
You have a motion for the first reading?
Yes.
Yeah. I approve my motion.
I second. I say to them.
Okay. And all in favor again? Everybody was fine, okay?
Yeah. That was second reading.
We approve it on second reading.
I'll second.
That's what they're handing off.
All in favor of the second reading? Say aye. Okay. All right. The next order of business that we have is the produce agreements for the park. Can you share it in? If I could on Barry, I'll put it under here.
Yeah.
In the past, we have had three places available for produce in the park and we have agreed that we will do that again if you so pass that. Each space will be $100 per year. At this point, we have Frank Cox who has asked for a space. We will still have two open spaces if anyone would like to apply for those spaces. As a council, do you have any discussion or changes that you would like to have in the produce?
Glad Frankie's back. He did a lot of, he's not better.
Okay. Okay. We will go ahead and approve that Frank has his space and we will have the two open spaces. All in favor? Or do I have a motion for that?
I still have a.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
We have.
First on that, please.
Charlie.
Charlie. Second. I second it.
Roger.
Yes.
Yeah. Same as, as.
Get on, can. We have department heads present this evening. Nick, do you have anything from your department that you need to?
No. I think we're in pretty good shape, Matty.
You're in pretty good shape?
Yeah. I think so.
Better shape than you were the other night, right? Was that a scheduled event? I've been asked that a thousand times.
No. Duke Energy comes in, they had a connection that went on our connection, but it was our responsibility to fix it, but Duke Energy's power going in there.
Okay. Well, you did a good job.
Yeah.
Gary?
The only thing I have, we got the new truck and it's in service. I mean, it can be in service, but we're waiting on it to finish a plate for it and be ready to get it. That's all I have.
All the equipment fit fine?
Yes.
All right. Tim?
Hi.
Hi. Do you have anything from your department?
Anything. Probably one that wherever one of is the, after Memorial Day, we'll start spraying for mosquitoes. The bugs you're getting right now are not mosquitoes. And they were probably the same thing we had to wait. It was really hard to deal with and they don't have a chemical actually to combat them at this point. So, we're starting right after Memorial Day.
Okay. And for those who are going to be at the cemetery over Memorial Day, what's their guidelines and when do we need to have things out and picked up and?
We're gonna quit, we eat the week after, starting the 16th, that, that, go ahead and write.
Okay.
After that week, they can put all the flower bed.
Okay. And they have till?
Basically, it had leaves all the week.
Okay. Okay. And they have how long after Memorial Day to have things removed and back?
Ma'am, I don't know. I'd say it's fairly short. Probably a stable one coming in.
Okay. All right. Anything else from your department?
We've been working on storm drains daily and it's, we're trying, or we gave it any. If I was to call, it'd be great to let us know about one we did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Does Barry have anything new from Sunset?
Barry?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sometimes you can't get through there. Well, we can hear.
People are not paying on the first of the month. So Fran has told them that their campsite is due the first of the month. That's not giving them 30 days. They need to, they need to burn the 30 days before it's due.
He had a gentleman come in today, May 9th, paid one month's rent. Well, it should be due again June 9th.
Right.
Well, she, she.
She told me it was due the first of June.
That's not 30 days. Okay. If we could get that corrected.
And he, he's not the only one. I've had several that's asked me that and it's kind of a problem.
And he's not paying a year. He's just paying month by month.
Month, yeah. Well, I've got construction workers out there that are paying month by month and it's the same with them.
Okay. I'll have to revisit that. I think it says in the ordinance that you all signed, when we read that, the table on the first, starting April 1st.
I can't remember. I know that's when the camp.
That's when they did it for the whole year.
That's when the camping site, when they camped the whole year.
Okay. So we need to make sure that it.
We need to readdress it and make sure that they can pay from month to month and it goes from whatever day they come in on if they get 31 days.
We will clarify that and make sure to inform Fran so that we can go from there for the people that are doing that. I know the original ordinance did say April 1st and it was on the first day of each month.
For the full year campers.
For the full, yeah. So we'll address that with her, that when they're there for 30 days, it is different. Okay? So if we will pass that information along to her, we will stand that, that's clarified.
My screen doors?
I did get permission from Fred Markle for you to go ahead and get a couple of screen doors out of the park fence.
Good.
And I told him that you would be hanging them, cause you had said that you would do that and get them. So he did. You should be getting picnic tables that the city already owned.
Yeah. Billy said something about they had several.
We have picnic tables that were being stored at the conservation club, so we did move to purchase and we already own them.
Okay. One other thing. What about the storage sheds?
The storage sheds? That's still a dark hole. We need to address that with the city council, I guess. This will be something that you all decide. There are people that have still left buildings behind. At what point do you feel like something merciful and wrong? I know we gave them 30 days. You guys talked about it and thought that would be a fair amount of time.
Well, when we made that motion, we didn't know it was gonna rain 29 out of the 30 days. So maybe, I mean.
What do you think is a fair date of which time?
Can we use the storage doors to our advantage?
Well, at that point, that's what Barry asked me. Can we, at, at a given point in time, assume ownership?
Formulate them another period of time to get them off.
Well, here's my question. Tell me if I'm right, Tim, or not. Cause I know they had decks built, storage building brought in, if they're attached to the property, technically that belongs to the city, correct?
But we gave them X amount of time, but like I said, you know?
Who knew?
Do we want to be lenient? It's up to you.
I guess get out of and say, do you want your building?
Have any of the building owners contacted you saying that they want their building?
One guy told me that he, he said, I have no way of moving it. I'm leaving. He, he took the deck. The other people, they moved out. They cleared their campsite. They've been gone the third week of April and I have not seen any one of them back there since. So they've pretty well just abandoned them.
It's not been a month yet.
Because I, you know, if you could, if you wanted that storage building and couldn't get it out, I mean, I would think you would go to Barry and say, hey, can I have a few more, a couple more weeks? It's, it's rained every day.
Well, the one gentleman, he says, I'm, he said, I've got a guy that is taking my deck. He said, but that storage shed, he said, I build it. He said, I have no way of moving it. He said, I'm leaving it.
Barry, do we, did you have a use for them?
I've got a use for one. I tore one storage shed down.
I, it said originally 30 days, so after 30 days, it's fixed our property. Go ahead.
Well, then.
I mean, that's what was in it.
And like I said, if it was something that you wanted, I mean, you would.
Somebody come back and said.
You know, hey, it's raining every day.
They took the decks and cleaned everything else out.
Well, they left me rotten decks too, so I've got several of them that they left.
Well, the rotten decks, just dispose of the best way possible, I would assume.
I know.
We're gonna need some equipment. There's no way I can dispose of them.
Okay.
I mean, we need them. I, we need to load them sometime.
Okay. Why, Tim, can you, yeah, can you work with him on that, please? On the way to get rid of the decks that need to go, that are rotten, that have been left?
Shake it? Yes, Tim.
Yes, man. Thank you. Okay. And we'll clarify the other thing with Fran to make sure that it reads, that they can do that. Whether they are staying there by the year, it's the first.
Like I said, I've had several of them saying, well, you know, my rent's due again and I haven't even burned it 30 days and they do have a problem.
That's fine.
How are we keeping track, Barry, with the people that have paid for like the 30 days or whatever? How are we keeping track? How do you know?
I'm keeping track.
Okay. I mean, on what day to rent due? You keep, you keep track what, when the campers, their rent is due.
Yeah.
Do they have?
I mean, the ones that are not paying the first of the month, the ones that are on odd days, well, I'm logging the day that it's.
This is, I like the gist, like in my business, you know, people call a factory and stuff, expires so damn soon. Is there some type of sign or something you can put on these?
I know. Say, say if I drive to the park, I don't know if they pay it or they. I know what you're saying. State parks have, and they, they post them and they're, and it went and everybody else just paid.
Okay. So that's clear to go ahead and do that.
Barry, how do you know what day they pay?
All right, yeah.
Well, but they're paying up here, I think.
They're paying up here, but I take them, I've got construction workers. I take them the receipts because they can't get in here to pay it before this building closes.
So you're bringing the money up here for them?
So I bring the money up and I'm paying it and I'm dropping the receipts at their camper and I'm logging when they pay.
That's fine.
Okay.
I don't.
He just clarified. The ordinance doesn't stay, so 30 days will be fine. It doesn't stay. Just by the year, starting April 1st.
I've got several of them.
How many, how many of those campers do we have, Barry? How many do we have now?
I was still moving down. And they were moving out, so.
It's 9:00.
I don't know what they, but they have tables, you know, in the process of moving and stuff.
I'd look and see if I might. So I don't know. Okay. So we're all clear with you?
Right.
Okay. Troy? Is Troy still back there?
No. He left.
He had to go?
He's back. He has, his dog had problems in the bathroom.
Oh.
Oh. Okay. Well, when he comes back, we'll visit that. In the meantime, I will let you know that we have received information that the Indianapolis Coats will be coming to the city of Linton again. They did this in 2008 and they're going to be coming here on June the 29th. And this will be concurrent with the Freedom Festival. So I've talked with the chamber and they have assured me that there will be space made for that to happen. That event, it might possibly be across from the park behind Bloomfield State Bank in that field or by the J.C. Building, but they will arrange for that to all go on together. They have improved their museum. They'll bring a 42-foot-long traveling museum along with past alumni players, a couple of active players, at which I don't know at this point with the NBL that they can consider anybody active because there's issue there. To their best of their knowledge, they'll be active players and a couple of cheerleaders. They'll be able to win Coats tickets and other Coats memorabilia and they will also bring their great big inflatables of the Coats. So it should be actually a good thing. Not only is it a good thing anytime this goes on in the city, but the fact that it's going along with the festival is kind of a win-win situation, I think, because the festival people will be drawn over and they'll draw people in that will go to the festival, so it's a win situation for both people involved. So that will be happening on the 29th day of June. I will remind everybody that the Citywide Yard Sale is May 21st. This is from 8:00 to 3:00 P.M. And if you still are interested, I think you can still sign up with this. You need to call D. for a Brumfield at 847-8207. Is there anybody else that has anything going on that they just publicly want to make people aware for Linton?
This past weekend, we, the Green County Recycle Board, they have came in contact with a gentleman that picks up TVs, computers, your electronics. He just, it's not with any, it's not associated with any recycling company around here. He is from Bloomfield, but he's not associated with Rayners or the solid waste. But he will come and do this for two days. I wanted to see how the one went over at Bloomfield, how that went. We'll have a meeting next week and if that went okay, the only thing we're required to do is to run an ad in the paper. We thought maybe, happened in May here, maybe we could get it done, maybe July, August, maybe out of the park, set back behind the tennis courts. So if we see how that went for Bloomfield, I would be interested in probably having Eric Wilson come and talk to us about it. And like I said, there's no cost to the city, just the ad in the paper. And this guy, there's no trash left. You know, he takes care of everything. And like I said, he's not with any recycling company there, associated with anyone, and his wife do this and they recycle. So I'd like to make you guys aware of that.
Okay.
I have a comment there, Mary. You wrote about the recycling board. You're on the recycling board, actually, Linda?
Yes.
Last council member was you guys informed us something about the city buying a recycling trailer for them and those get back to us on prices and all that. But you guys have done that and also I have a suggestion. I know we haven't acted on it yet. My suggestion as a councilman is if we do go ahead and buy that trailer, I think the city ought to keep it themselves to use down there and not to give it away to the board. Some reason of someday, you know, they may take ours and move away and put it on a different trailer and we're gonna go to the board. Someday we're gonna go and get the recycling really for itself and we're gonna get away 12, 16,000 dollar trailer. I think we're gonna keep it ourselves. We're gonna end up on.
I know. The only reason that we were going to give it to the solid waste board, or the solid waste, was because they would handle dumping it.
Well, I mean, they're often used, but I think.
I know, but I think it may have been for insurance reasons.
But if the city's gonna buy it, I think we're gonna use it, take it and all that, which is coming up, cause it's gonna be bigger and they can take that one somewhere else. And the city is still out of that and it belongs to us instead of giving it away.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I think the way that they had to give it to the, to the county, I mean, we can check this out.
You might bring it up front, front of the board.
But I believe the, I believe the reason we, we were gonna give it to the county was so that the city wouldn't be responsible. The county cannot come and get the city equipment and take it over there. I think it really had more to do with insurance and legalities than.
They're giving the money on.
I know. But the county can't come in and take it because it belongs to the city, just because of insurance reasons. But I'll ask Marilyn Harpen about it.
I don't know where she come from.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about it earlier.
That's just my deal. I have.
And I didn't have any problem with the city keeping it either, only that if the city keeps it, I don't think that the county wants to be responsible for dumping it and stuff. So I, I, there was a reason and I think it was insurance reasons.
Summer is falling, we're down there on that one, so you're probably, they're gonna sue us, I'm not gonna sue the county.
No. But on the other hand, when the, when the county dumps that, if that trailer comes loose, do you know anything about it, Tim?
Getting into bed windshield to form a trailer.
I don't know. I know there was a reason that they did.
Whatever's pulling it, we have the insurance on it.
Do you know anything about it or?
Just what I tried to hear. I like to be able to be the one to check into this and make some decisions, logical decisions, cause you guys, I don't mean anything bad, but there's no facts here. I'll talk to Eric and see what's going on and I'd like to do that.
I don't wanna help them out and I think we're in front of, I appreciate.
Very nice opportunities to expand what we wanna do in our system incorporated with theirs and that's where I'd like to go with that.
Okay. Okay. Well, next, next council meeting then, maybe you can bring back some information for us.
No decision's been made on the.
No, no.
That was just a suggestion.
It was just something I wanted to keep going.
Okay. We're gonna backtrack a little bit now. Sean's back and is Troy back?
Yeah. He had to leave.
Okay. He had to, he had to totally leave. Okay. Sean, do you have anything from the utility?
Just whatever these guys are covering now, I don't know.
Is Jeff here?
Is Jeff back there? Yeah, he is. Okay. I didn't see you back there, Jeff. Do you have anything?
I put it up there. I don't really have much, just other than the general maintenance things we're doing, we're in meter change out program and changing gas and water meters and going to the radio re-meters of, that's the main thing we got going right now.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any new business?
Did we ever get the property on F Street? The church you answered? We've got the papers, but is it ready to be sold or do we have to? Tim, who won that or? I'd always want to get bought. I would shoot the Cox property.
Uh huh. It's done. What? I mean, the paperwork.
It's done, but, I mean, the paperwork's here.
We have a person that would like to purchase that property. What would we need them to do, sir? How would you like for us to proceed?
Well, we can approach them, I mean, it's, it's the same person.
Yeah.
But the deed come in, what day I get the, I believe we got here Friday afternoon. Because they came out with the invoice and the stuff, Marvin, delivering. We can look at it, we've, we've got it.
Do you know how much it was, was, I don't know. I'm gonna find out how much that was.
But I assume we probably ought to include that in the price, and the, the original amounts, and. I believe it's done.
So could we, uh, when he comes and wants to purchase this property, then how long, do we have to act on it at the council meeting, or what?
Well, it depends, yeah, we can have a council meeting.
Because he's wanting, he's wanting to buy it.
Yeah, I would just, like I said, we'll have to.
Okay, we will get our facts together to have a fair price, barring all of our expenses and the cost of the properties. And if you would pass along to the gentleman that during the next June council meeting, that.
Charlie, good approach, maybe about that, if we can get him, if we can get him back this way, we'll take a look at it. Now, if we can get the final cost.
And if we need to, we can call a meeting in between, and, you know, if you all are willing to do that.
Sure, yes.
Question about Mary? On that piece of property, Tim, like, can we sell it, or do we have to ever set a big price on that way up to, if that's a big raise or anything like that, or can we just get rid of it?
I want to see what the final cost was first, to see where the cost, because I don't, I didn't, I ain't opened any of the stuff when it came back yet. I was gonna let it get paid and go through, because I heard, it's like the person wants to buy it, I've heard several times that I wasn't originally involved, and I've never actually spoke to the person, so I don't know.
And, and.
I think they contacted Charlie, but they've never spoken to me, and, and I wasn't involved in the original discussion.
It is, it's, it will depend on the expenses, where it falls, whether you have to sell it, raise it, bid it.
We paid twenty-eight hundred dollars for those things.
We will sell further, and as soon as, he needs to contact us, and he, up here, you know, and, and contact him. We need to open, get prices, and then we will all have an executive session. Okay? Any other business?
No other business, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, if you will all stand for the financial billings.